Here.
Here?
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Yep.
With all members present, we will proceed. Report of the minutes has been posted and submitted. Any additions or subtractions? If not, unfinished business. Item A, water quality testing.
Last results came in good. Still been out clean, good water. The EPA changed regulations, rules, limits on PFAS. We're still at non-detect level, so we're not in that criteria.
Very good. Okay, item B, ARP discussion.
There's really nothing new on that. It still stands as was before.
Okay. Item C, five-year plan. Any additions or subtractions?
Hey Craig.
Yes.
You should tell them that we, I guess I can do it. We received a letter from Senator Manson's office. We did receive the $1 million for the sewer line expansion to the city of Parkersburg. I, you know, that money will not get us all the way to Parkersburg, but at some point, we might want to decide to go ahead and start the project anyway, run it as far as we can. And then we've applied for, you know, more earmarks to see if they come through or not. Usually if you have a project started, you get priority, so we'll see. But at any rate, you know, we did receive the letter. It's official now, so, you know, we can actually start that project. We have all the estimates from Burgess and Nyphal and everything, so we can start that project if that's something the board wants to do.
Okay, just getting an update on that link. I know last time you asked first Nyphal to see how far that went. Their calculation is it goes up the middle of Walmart, as far as it goes for a million dollars from a plant to the middle of Walmart. So, got a long way to go, so we'll, we can discuss that at a future date, what we want to do.
All right, any more discussion on five-year plan? Okay, item D, water and wastewater improvement project update. Ferguson, Nyphal.
The only update is just what Randy and Craig were talking about. We have the money and we're just waiting for, we have authorization, go ahead and start either design or planning.
Thank you. Item E, dredging of pond run and dry dam update.
We have not got anything referenced to funding on that yet. Go back in the query, guess, and see where that goes. We did give you the update on that dredging. I mean, these last couple storms, we know we've got a little bit of rain. And there was a lot of issues in that channel, references to debris, trees getting stuck in bridges. But we didn't have any flooding from actual pond run. Okay.
Okay, item F, Ferguson, Nyphal, 28 straight storm drainage improvements.
We applied for funding with the Clean Water Act. That's done the rankings yet. That should be next month, so hopefully by the next meeting, we should have an update about where we are and the money that we've received.
Okay, item G, wells nine and 10 rehab.
We have towarded facility with first Nyphal. We have done some, looked at roofing, determined needs, both places are going to need new roofing. Looked at electrical upgrades into it. Might get some information, see what, there's a bunch of old panels, boxes in there. We just kind of went through and what we used to use, what we don't use anymore to alleviate or remove those products and check the amperage and the voltage into that complex. Our electrician have all information in your design work. Good.
So, okay, question. So that's, where are we going to go out to bid on that one? Nine and 10?
We have the plans. Authorization to bid.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, item H, SCADA update.
Yeah, we awarded this project back in November, December. At that time, they told us they had the product in stock, ready to go, and, you know, this is the middle of April. I'm not really efficient reading from him. We've signed the contracts. It seems like every time we call him, it's, you know, we'll be there in two weeks, three weeks. I'm not pleased with what service I'm getting from them. I felt this project should already been in place and at least the water system already completed. So, it's, I guess I'm looking to board if they are not here by next meeting. I strongly feel we should withdraw the contract because I've had ample enough time to do it and we should rebid it and award it to someone else. All right?
Would it be a good idea to maybe formalize that in a letter to them?
We can do that.
Russ, would you see a problem doing that or trying to them to show up?
To show up here?
Show up project. I don't think it's a letter saying, hey, we're arguing, don't show up.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing wrong.
All right. Sounds good. Anything anyone wants to add concerning unfinished business?
Meter replacement project.
Oh, I forgot that, sorry. Item I, meter replacement project.
We have begun to receive shipments of the meter tops. The last week we did get the meters tops in for the one-inch and two-inch meters, all of them. So, when I spoke to the gentleman, they're going to ship out three different shipments. Within a week or two, we should be getting our second shipments and that will include the three-quarter inch meters and then they'll finish it out in order of shipment, so.
Your plans to do that change out in staff, in house staff?
Yes.
Any meter replacement? Okay, now down to new business. Establishing salary increases for full-time permanent employees, salary increases for non-seasonal part-time employees and to increase the starting wages for all new full-time employees approved.
This is a follow-up to what council's been gracious enough to give us. We just have to prove it to utility board to make it official because it is two different departments. What the council has awarded, full-time employees at $1.65 an hour plus the 35 cent longevity starting in 1st of July. New employees will start out with $2 an hour pay raise. So that starts out at $16.89 an hour for new employees. So, I have gotten better response on applications. I have received approximately 10. I did an interview of individual day before yesterday. It's good, seems to me like a good candidate. Once Randy gets back, we'll sit down with individual and interview him again with hopefully HR on the phone. And if they like him, we'll play off of the guy's job, then we'll start interviewing some additional people, like get them in place, so.
And how many are you still down staff? Okay, so it was put in the box, the resolution. Russ, would you like to read that for us if you would?
Let me see if I can scroll here. This is a resolution establishing salary increases for full-time permanent employees, salary increases for non-seasonal part-time employees and increase the starting wages for all new full-time employees. Be it resolved by the utility board that all full-time permanent employees and all non-seasonal part-time employees excluding law enforcement officers, the starting rate for permanent full-time employees shall receive a wage increase beginning on the first pay period after April 1, 2024. As follows, all current full-time permanent employees, I'm going to just read out the excluding law enforcement officers part. All current full-time permanent employees shall receive an hourly wage increase of $1.65 per hour. All current non-seasonal part-time employees shall receive an hourly wage increase of $1.65 per hour. All new higher full-time employee positions shall receive an hourly starting pay increase of $2.
All right, we entertain a motion.
Does it move?
Okay.
All righty, motion has been moved.
Second.
So, yeah.
Move in a second.
Are there any other questions? If not, all in favor, should I vote raising the right hand?
Well, we need to, we need to hold it as ready as. So I would suggest just moving left to right, pulling and asking, yay or nay?
Yep.
Yay.
Steve?
Yay.
Yay.
Yes.
Mr. Andy?
Yes.
All righty, yes, everyone said yes, passed by unanimous decision. Any other questions?
Of course I said yes.
Why not? I couldn't hear you.
Well, I heard that.
After all this time, you're asking me that?
That's why I look at you like.
I sacrificed myself for this day. I wanted to say no today.
Wow.
Wake up, Greg.
Oh, man, I made sense. I have hearing issues, so. Hope I can also take care of it.
I'd just, I'd like to say thanks to everyone that worked for us. I think it's a room moving the right direction and it'll be a shot in the arm for all employees.
Agreed.
Okay, so let me get back to this. That's all the new business we have. Managers report.
Not much report. Guys have been staying busy. The rain issue that we've had last couple weeks, flooding has hit us pretty hard. Unfortunately, you know, we don't really worry about the river too much, but it's, because it's, when it rains that heavy, we have to monitor the dry dam structures, the flooding that's in the city, storm drain issues, backflow sewer systems that we have. I mean, with this lift station, the main lift station in Parkersburg, well, you know, pretty well maxed out. Some of the water was getting into the manholes, so we's producing a lot of diluted sewer in Parkersburg. So, the guys stayed with it, worked a lot of hours, did the best we can. So, hopefully everybody's happy. I don't get too many complaints in the city. Didn't really have any property structural damage anywhere, so we were fortunate. We had that particular day when the river come up crescent, we had three water leaks, numerous sewer backups. We had to dress, go out and talk to people. Not much we could do, but we still had to go and talk to them, make sure the manhole was flowing properly. Storm drains is huge because leaves, sticks, everything getting top grades. We had to go out and send the guys and crews around dragging all that stuff off the catch bases, try to get everything drained right. So, we survived. Everything's getting cleaned up. We're in good shape. River's going back down for the second time, so we're good on that. Right now, the power work side, we've been out patching holes and sewer and water side, we're making a lot, seemed like a lot of taps and water and sewer taps lately, so. Little projects going on, people building garages, wanting additional taps like that. We will be starting a second meter project, Tommy, myself, with Tommy. It's a paper format where we can hand the guys documents and they go out and change these meters out. When I say change meters out, we're not really changing complete meter. Everything we're doing is changing the tops. Okay, so it's just a matter of hitting a push pin, moving existing top, put new one-on-one of the anti-backup. And we'll scan it. Come back here, ladies are set up to where they just scanned the barcode on the paperwork. There's no data entry. It's all being computerized, so should keep down on the errors quite a bit, so. But we already started doing that. The software's up, full staff and office personnel, so we're pretty good. That's it, really for manager report, so.
I have a question. You talked about the sewer backups, you know, because of the flooding. How many approximately do we have, like fewer than six, more than six, more than 10? I don't know.
How many callouts?
Yeah.
That's a good question, because I had two guys running, two crews running back trucks and they was out all day addressing issues, manholes and checking. On the kind of days we don't keep record of what we do, because it was really kind of busy. Usually we do data reports, you know, pictures, all that kind of stuff. If there's property damage, like backups of people's basement, then we'll do the reports. But usually the people calling us, say, hey, my sewer's running slow or.
Right.
Closeout flush and we'll go out there and make sure everything's running good, run the back truck.
I was just interested in how many homeowners had it backed up into their basement or whatever, into their homes.
You, on that particular day, it'd be a rough number, 60, 70, so. Yeah.
So, I know we're talking about increasing, you know, we have to replace the trunk line. But that whole sewer project is, you know, the lift station, all of that stuff is like $7 million project. And, I mean, it just concerns me. I mean, I, I think I got a little shocked there when you said like 60, because I thought it was going to be.
Three or four.
Well, I knew it wasn't going to be three or four, but honestly, I'm not, I don't have an idea of it. It just, I find that to be shocking that that many residents have, you know, basically we're sewer retention in their home when we have a lot of rain like we did over this past couple weeks.
Well, you'd go out, a lot of people, when we go out and check things out, usually it wasn't sewer back in their basement, it was surface water in their basements. So, but we still have to inspect it.
Gotcha.
Just for their courtesy, I mean, we just make sure the main ain't backed up. A lot of people call us when they, the commode will flush and a griggle and they call us, which is good. Well, we have to address that issues. It usually comes from surface water getting in the manholes.
Okay.
Some streets, they still have downspouts connected in the sewer, so we try to address every call we get.
Yeah.
Usually the girls out front are calling, either texting the guys or sending out work orders or calling them up, say, hey, check Martha's at 414. And they'll call back, say, hey, check Bill's at 416.
Oh, I mean, I know your crews are very responsive. I mean, I know that from just personal experience, but, you know, it's just concerning. The sewer situation's very concerning and all part of the five-year plan and all that stuff. And, you know, I just want to see us hop on this and I really thought we were going to, at one point in time, it was said in this board, at this board, that we had the whole thing earmarked that was going to get paid for and now it's retracted down to $1 million, so I just want to get started on it and trying to figure it out.
Yeah, actually, when we first started, I thought $1 million was getting real close to Parkersburg and it didn't.
No.
Steve, can I ask you a question? How many houses are in the area?
I'm sorry, can't hear.
How many houses are in the area?
Houses?
Yeah, you provide sewer service.
5,000.
Yes, yeah, about 4,500, 4,000.
So, 4,500, 4,000 and 4,500, and out of 4,000 and 4,500, you have 60 or 70 calls. Just for, we'll just say right now, generically, water in the basement. And of those calls, do you have a rough idea of how many as a result of actual sewer backups?
Very few, but what happens is the sewer runs, it's at its capacity.
Right.
So it doesn't run as smoothly as it should, so you can still. Even when you got basement drains, you know, I say surface water, there's a lot of basement drains draining to San Diego sewer.
Sure.
So, it all kind of goes together. It's hard to separate out.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not going to have issues in Greenmont because we're top hill, but lower section of town.
Just because of where the revenue. So, what would be, let's assume it's 50, so that would be, what, 0.9%? Would that be less than a percent? I don't, I haven't, I'd have to do the math.
15%.
4,500, 50 is 60. One point, thank you. It's about, a little bit around, so you have about 98%. Whenever you have a huge rain like that, 98.7% of the houses are fine. 1% of the houses have a issue. And are they the same houses?
Majority of the time, yes.
Is there a solution to fix that in that area?
We have it, design work, a lot of them, lower section of town, 16th Street, 17th Street. We have that plan. That was the lineup grade we was doing from 12th Street. The sewer plant crossed 12th Street, you got Grand Central turn left, long pond run at 16th and 17th Street. Crease and diameter size that line, so get that flow out there.
So the issue is the drainage, getting it out of the area quicker and a larger diameter.
Yeah, what happens, pond run gets up in that particular area, starts catching catch faces, just gets in the manholes.
And I'm only asking in the context of, because I don't know if there is a possible. But, and to upgrade the line in that area. Right. Now, just that area. Okay, I'm sorry, I was just, I was just.
Yeah, it's phased out. We've all reviewed the plans. It's in phases.
Yeah, but I'm saying, and is that phase one or is that phase?
Yes, phase.
All right, I was just asking, I was just thinking of targeted, so.
Right.
It's not my place. I was just thinking.
Has the owners been instructed in those houses that we know it's actually a sewer in the basement, instructed to install check valves when they're running? Has the owners been instructed to help alleviate that problem with making it, they install check valves along their line?
We have. Most everybody on 16th and 17th Street have check valves, backflip openers.
Yeah.
So the few houses that you're dealing with don't?
Yeah, but see, when you install backflip there, it keeps the sewer going out, it's something to block.
Got you. So it just, it stops everything.
That checks slam shut, normally sewers. All you.
But you had water over manholes, the Long River Road, so.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to distract.
I'm saying, we's really busy these couple days. It just, it takes a lot of force to, a lot of employees to get things still working on, on days like. We all, a lot of us can sit around houses and not really, we like the view, like the water, our big, the River Road, I've never seen so many people on a road for a long, long time, look at the river, which I think is cool. It was neat to see, but felt sorry for the people who was affected. So, but we try to help everybody out as much we can, residents, non-residents in that particular area and try to alleviate any issues they might have, just be friendly neighbors. And I'm a crisis like that, on A and S Drive, it flooded, so. All right? All right, really have.
Anybody else?
Are we at comment part of the agenda here?
Yeah, I'll say it now. Utility board comment.
Okay. I don't want to get ahead of you. Well, I mean, same frustration I always have, every time I come, is moving on some of this stuff, you know? Especially when we have, just, you know, we've had some flooding and now we really emphasize how important the sewer needs to, we need to focus on that and get that project done.
It seems slow right now. I mean, it's like building a house. When you start a project, start building a house, you get the foundation, you get the structure up. It takes a long time to acquire the property, a long time to go to bank, get the money, a long time thing, but once you start building the house, you see it go up real quick. And then it slows down again, because that's where we're at. We're in the design stage. We've talked about the projects, the upgrades, 12th Street, sewer lines. That's in the project phase. We're looking for the money for that particular project, either by funding or free money. I call it free money, it's, it's are free, but free money, we don't have to reimburse or the loan process, bond issues.
Right, I mean, I know exactly where we're at. It comes down to money and we went last year and we did the whole thing and then we never could find out what the answer was for the bond for the water and the sewer side and, you know. It's where it's, just where it's at. I mean, I know you can do all, well, yeah, I mean, whether we're going to go out for a bond, what we're going to do to put this, to put the money together. Because we were told before, we had all these earmarks and that all seems to have fallen apart, except for the $1 million for the trunk line. So, because there was supposed to be earmarks for pond run and I understood last meeting that we have to resubmit that. And, you know, I don't think things are going all that great in Congress for earmark procedure, but miracles do happen. Hope springs eternal, but, well, what I'm saying, all those things have fallen apart. So now we're back to trying to figure out how we're going to pay for this through the bond process.
Okay. Maybe I'll ask Mike for some help on this. You know, we presented you all the timeframe it took, so, do these particular projects and we've approved, say, yeah, these are projects we'll do through five-year plan. And we're currently working on bonding, right, in design.
Yeah, we'll need some authorization to actually start the design process. We've got the report, but until someone says, okay, this is a B project, we're just holding until you do that. The next, if, if and when the project goes, you know, first thing will be is the applications to the Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council. And that's where you'll actually see where your money's coming. You know, if it's loan, if it's grant, it all depends on what folks there say.
So, right now, our project is Wells 9 and 10. That's where we're at right now, right?
The one we're working on currently, correct?
So we haven't submitted anything with regards to the sewer lift station?
Yeah. We've submitted to be on the list, but we've not submitted the actual funding application.
Thank you.
What you're asking, if you want the peddled on agenda for the approval of the lineup period 12th Street, 17th Street. And we can, you all have to approve that, then we can go start with him and approve the design work so he can go get the bond.
I'm not, yeah, I mean, that sounds good.
So I see, we're saying you want to put that on the next agenda?
All right, so that will go on the next agenda.
Okay.
Just make sure that's phase one, right?
That'll work, thank you.
We already discussed that and we already agreed that that was going to be, like I said, phase one and we's going to go ahead and start designing work and start doing that project. Getting, trying to get the funding for that project that has reference to the rate study. That should be in the minutes somewhere, so. And I will look and I'll get it on agenda, make it official next time. We're all going to agree on it. That particular project, I think we should do more of that particular project, okay, as phase one, but. Just want to do phase one of the sewer. Of all of 17th Street, that's fine. And I still think there's some lineup grades and water that we need to get done, especially letting copper rule come in place, replace some galvanized line. If we haven't approved that, or you all haven't approved that, then it needs to be on the agenda also, also, so we can go out, start engineering work and bonding. So, but I, you have wrote the timeframe for that, so.
Yeah, like I said, we just need someone to say, start, and we can do both.
So you want us to prove the task or for you to do that?
I already have the sewer. But I'm waiting on the wa- But I'm waiting on the wa, I, I, I didn't, I had the sewer, I had the sewer for three or four years waiting on the, a final decision, so. I have it, I'll need the water. I'll, I'll send Lori stuff, but then we need.
All right.
Yeah.
So phase one on it also, which is the line replacements.
Yeah, we're levying the inch and quarter galvanized line, which is a high maintenance size for us, so that's what during the flood, it was like that three breaks on the inch and quarter galvanized line, so.
Okay.
All right.
I'll follow up with Lori too, once you, just email me, once you get all this stuff, so I can see what we need to do. Thank you.
You can write the password, yes. If you're ready down in the sewer. It was an original skill.
House Williams?
Yeah.
Or? Down here.
I've got, I've got one more thing, because I forgot to tell Lori. Next month will be our annual review of the stormwater reports, so if everyone can look at that and we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
And Mayor Rap, you have anything else?
I do not.
All right. All hearts and minds clear. Meeting adjourned.